Am I ready? I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting, Monday, April 7th, 2014. It is now nine o'clock. If everybody would please stand for the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, could you call the room, please?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Here.
Ms. Riggin.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Sean Neil.
Present.
And Ms. Donna Patterson.
There's no public hearings. We need approval for the minutes from March 17th, 2014.
Second.
Our motion is second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Arnold.
Yeah, Jim Arnold, 300 East McCall Boulevard. And, yeah, I did have some comments. Actually, I guess I'm a meeting late, but if you'd let me mention a note about March 3rd meeting, which apparently you've already approved. And at that meeting, President King welcomed Mr. Roger Overby. And there was a note that he would be taping the Commissioners' meetings and they will be available on public access Channel 60 on following Wednesday. And first, I guess, that's a good thing. I congratulate you for that. And also, at that meeting, though, in the minutes, it says, "Mr. Tom Terry, Muncie, Indiana, spoke regarding the current reassessment contract and professional services." And my comment here today is that, on that minutes, I'm a little concerned that the published minutes are incomplete, they're inaccurate, and they should be revised. The minutes do not report that there was also with the present was James Carmichael or his comments. Carmichael responded, it's a comment from Tom Terry, at that meeting. At that meeting Carmichael admitted, or noted, that he had negotiated a contract, or renegotiated a contract in question, saying that you always do this when you take bids for contracts. Each of the Commissioners noted, or at least that's the way I read it from watching the video on Channel 60, is that you were not aware that changes were made to the contract that was eventually approved. And President King stated that we will get advice from our attorney. None of that information is reflected in the record, so that concerns me. And, you know, the note about Mr. Terry just notes that he spoke regarding, does not state that he had some, what appear to be serious concerns about that contract. It's pretty much a neutral statement about his speech, and again, in the midst of Mr. Carmichael's presence. I would add that, as a footnote, it would also be helpful for the videos of the Commissioners' meetings and other meetings, that they be posted on the county website. It is nice to be able to watch them on Channel 60, but they're showed a minimum number of times, and so you have to really work to get a hold of them and be able to see them on the Channel 60. And since I can't always take time off work to be at these meetings or other meetings, it's helpful for citizens to be able to watch them from the county website. So, my concern is that. My concern is that the minutes that were approved for March 3rd were inaccurate and incomplete. Thank you.
Any other comment? Denise, call the room, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have presentations to the Commissioner. We have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Contessa?
Yes. Do you still have a copy of it?
I have it right here.
Okay. I was just asking.
I'm Contessa Stilts with Delaware County 911. I was requesting that Commissioners read a proclamation for the week of April 13th through the 19th, stating that it's National Telecommunicators Week and recognizing all of our 911 dispatchers for our county.
Will you please state your name and where you're from?
Contessa Stilts with Delaware County 911.
As a proclamation here, National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, April 13th through the 19th, 2014. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics are critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Delaware County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety communicators of Delaware County Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that Commissioners of Delaware County declare the week of April 13th through 19th, 2014, to be National Public Safety Telecommunication Week in Delaware County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keeps our town, city, county, and citizens safe.
Thank you.
Be glad to pass it.
Would you sign that? If you'll sign it, that way you can take the original with you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well deserved.
We recognize them all week long.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, the Journey Home to Veteran Homeless Shelter, Linda DeHaven.
Good morning. My name is Linda DeHaven from the Journey Home. And you asked, what is the Journey Home? And I think you all have brochures about what the Journey Home is, but this is rather an informational thing, so we can let you know that of the homeless population in the United States, 23% of the homeless are veterans. Why are they homeless? Many of them suffer from PTSD, drug and alcohol issues. Why do they do that? They've seen a lot. They've suffered. And this home is what we call a Transitional Enhancement Center, that we can house veterans who have gone through what they call the SARP program, the VA hospital where they're dried out, for anywhere from Dayton does it for three days, Marion offers 26 days, I think up to five months, Cincinnati offers 21 days while, I'm trying to think of the other one, but Indianapolis, they have a brief dryout period. Right now, the VA is looking at just taking them out of a three-day dryout period, or a 21-day dryout period, and placing them in a home, and surrounding them with social services, which is good, but we're talking about a man or a veteran who has an addiction problem. They can walk out the door and find it anywhere they want. So, the Transitional Home offers them an opportunity to come into a structured environment, where we have nurses, counselors, life skills coaches, they live there 24/7, we have hired house parents to live in the facility, and we believe that the structured environment, which is modeled after a place in Fort Wayne called the Shepherd's House, we are called the Journey Home. And we are servicing initially five counties in Indiana, Jay, Delaware, Henry, Wayne, and Randolph. And then we're also accepting clients or residents from Mercer, Preble, and Dark in Ohio, since we sit so close to the state line. The Veterans Service Officers are extremely pleased with this, and the veterans' hospitals are very thrilled to know that we have this available for us. And I know you have the Veterans Court over here, but this is a different program. This is really, really structured. They're monitored 24/7, we have security cameras in place, and we provide them with all their food, life's training, on-the-job training, as well as taking classes online. We have a learning center set up, their bedrooms are set up, and as they go through the program with us, they will enter into like a six-man room, and then progress up to like a two-man room. So, we're kind of taking them on a journey from the SARP program through helping them get out. And we already have six companies, including one over here in Delaware County, that will hire our veterans, either part-time or full-time. So, I would encourage you all to recognize the fact that our veterans have given us the right, for me to even speak here publicly, and for us to be able to pledge our allegiance to our country, as we just did. The shelter is located in Winchester, Indiana. It's in the old hospital building that the county over there put about $9 million into it and renovated it. And then the YOC was there for the problem children, or more correctly, probably, the problem parents. But that was vacated and moved to Yorktown, and that facility sat empty, used for storage by the county for seven months, or seven years. And when I walked through it, I just thought, oh my gosh, this is perfect. I got involved with the Veterans Service Officer in Randolph County. He helped our family, and I offered to help back, and he tried to get this started, didn't know how to go about it. So, I stepped in, and with my marketing and business background, I was able to file, get ourselves organized, incorporated, bylaws, file the 501(c)(3), and all the necessary products. And then we've completely repainted it. It was institutional white, which I hate, these veterans, and it's a very warm atmosphere. Donations have poured in from everywhere, the veterans, all of the veterans' organizations have helped immensely. The cities are beginning to give us some funding, not a lot, because nobody has much money to spend these days. And, you know, if that would be something that you could maybe find a little bit of rainy day money to help us out, that would be wonderful. But more importantly, I want to spread the word to Delaware County that this service is available to our veterans and the Veterans Service Officer. She apologizes, Janet. Janet Davis couldn't be here with me, she had an appointment, because she was in training all last week. And as our Veterans Officer was in training and had to take a vet to Fort Wayne, because our driver didn't know how to get to Fort Wayne VA Hospital. So, it's just a very, very important program, and as you learn to know these veterans who have the addiction problems, it's triggered by PTSD. And the PTSD comes in a variety of forms, and we're having, WWII veterans and Vietnam veterans have that surface when maybe their wife dies, or they lose a child. And then they start drinking. And you ask, you know, why do the veterans drink? Well, it's to suppress the pain. And then it becomes an addiction, and, you know, that first step of recognizing that you're addicted is, a quarter of it is recognizing you have a physical allergy to the addiction, and the rest of it, the other 75%, is recognizing you have a mental obsession. And then when you go through the process of getting well and admitting your problems. But their day is very structured, they'll be learning, they'll be, they have household chores to do, they have to keep the house in order, and we will be able to house 15 to 18 veterans. So, we do give preference to Delaware County, and Delaware County is where I was born and raised, and I'm very passionate about this county, and so I would answer any questions anyone might have.
You answered mine, you have transportation, that's so important.
Oh, yes, yes. We're getting our own vehicle, and the veterans, the neat thing about the facility is, in the campus, in the building, is our wing, which is where the veterans will live. But the social services are all there, so they can get food stamps, they can apply for food stamps, the Veterans Service Officer is in the building, Work 1 is in that building, the counseling is in that building. So, we've got counselors and nurses and everything right there. So, it's not something they have to go about.
So, they should just contact our veterans to get started, and then...
Yes, contact a Veterans Service Officer if they have a, if you have a family friend that has an addiction problem, contact the Veterans Service Officer, he may be able to intervene and help. Contact, you know, if you can get the veteran to go to the Veterans Service Officer, and they can talk him through it to try to get that, pull that out of him that they've got an issue.
I have a brochure. Do you have a question?
I'm Jeff Arnold, I'm Delaware County Prosecutor.
Yes.
Did you have contact with Eric Dungan as this prosecutor?
Yes, Eric, yes. Eric is a great, great individual.
Yes, indeed.
And Alice McFarland, I can name them all.
So, you, are you going to work with our Veterans Court here?
I will, yes. We will be glad to do that, and that should all be done through Janet Davis, probably, because I know that the Veterans Court is set up over here, and I know it's structured a little differently.
Eric Dungan would be the person you'd want to work with.
Yeah. Eric's a good person, and he's very knowledgeable and very busy.
Okay. We've got a pretty successful Veterans Court, and we definitely can use your services.
Oh, it is.
Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome. And please, if you have a veteran that you know is in trouble, get him into the VSO office or call our office. And if any of you want the brochures I've brought today, I'll be glad to distribute them.
What is your capacity and how many?
15 to 18.
15.
Yeah, and we just opened a week ago, so we're just starting to accept our first residents, and they do go to AA meetings, NA meetings, celebrate recovery. I mean, it is the full, every hour, exercise, everything is structured.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any consideration or anybody that would like these, I would be glad to pass them about.
You can go free to the other territory if you'd like.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's good to be back home in Wednesday.
Next, contracts, agreements for approval, Blue &amp; Company EMS.
Mr. President, this is what we've done 2011, 2012 year on a flat fee rate for the Indiana Medicaid, standing government ambulance provider cost reports. They feel very good about us getting some reimbursements back for those two years. The 2013 report, if adopted, would be on a contingency base at a flat fee of 25% up to $15,000 if we were to incur a rebate. They're comfortable and feeling that we will, but I thought we'd run this on a contingency fee until we go there. I'll move for approval as for Blue &amp; Company LLC agreement.
I'll second that.
Have a motion on second. Any discussion? Denise, call the room, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. I know we did this, I believe, on our last meeting, but we had to find another precinct thing for Precinct 61?
No, it was Precinct 67. We received a call in our office, and I think it was Rejoice Ministries could no longer serve as that, as a polling location. So, Angie Moyer and I went traveling the county roads, and we were really fortunate, Temple Baptist Church at 1779 20 North State Road, 167 North in Dunkirk, will be the polling location in Precinct 67. They are in that precinct, and they are in Delaware County. So, this list will be advertised twice in the Muncie newspaper. And I do, would like to just let everyone know that in Precinct 35, they will be disseminating United Methodist Church at 1201 West McGaughyard, which has always been the location. We will be able to use that, even though the construction is still ongoing. But I did go and talk with them Friday, and we did look at the facility and where we will be able to set up. It's perfect. Billy from Highway will make some signs. Yeah, what door is it? It's good, you'll be going around to the back, and we'll have three signs there. South. And they'll be going in, yeah, I'll be south, and they'll be going in where the office location is, but it'll be a perfect location. The room that we'll be utilizing is great, so I'm just glad that it's going to be the same place where they've always been.
So, that's the only changes?
Yeah, yeah, well, just the one, really.
Just one change, okay.
Yeah, on 67. Yeah. Appreciate it.
I'll move for approval of the polling locations for the 2014 primary election that is presented.
Second that.
Have a motion on second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the room, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have the interlocal agreement providing for employee and CPA fare board.
Mr. President, this interlocal agreement and the next general services agreement is something just cleaning the, just some cleanup that we have been doing, but not been doing so with the agreements. The fare board is utilized and has reimbursed Marcia Day's forms and services for the Delaware County Fair in the county, that she's in on our insurance plan. And as with like Centertownship Trustee, the Airport Authority, and all a few others, we're just cleaning this up and getting it right in these agreements. So, the first interlocal agreement is stating that with addition that they're using Joyce Cleverager CPA to perform their bookkeeping services, and that allow the fare board to do that. And then the next, the general services agreement while we're on this will be between the county Commissioners and Joyce Cleverager, allowing that to happen, that contract. So, these are basically cleanup to make state board accounts, thus be in line with their request.
You just want to go and look together?
So, yeah, I'll move for approval for the interlocal agreement providing for the employee and CPA to the fare board, and also the general services agreement for CPA services between the county Commissioners and Joyce Cleverger.
Second that.
Have a motion on second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the room, please.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have the agreement to provide professional consulting services. I just found out this morning, they'd like to table this till the 21st. So, we'll table that one.
If it's tabled, we'll have to vote on it. Can we just do it next time?
Yeah, we'll just put it on the 21st. Yeah, we'll just put it on the 21st.
Next, we have Microsoft Select Agreement, Jim Plouffe.
Good morning, Jim Plouffe from KNAIT. What you have in front of you is a Microsoft volume license agreement. I've been working with my Dell representative, and in the process of upgrading our computers off of XP to Windows 7, Windows 8, which whatever we could use in that particular situation. This allows us a better pricing for the operating system, and it also takes advantage of the state's licensing agreement that they have with Microsoft. So, we're taking advantage of all the other counties that's also going in with them and all with the state, what they've done. So, that just includes the PCs, it also includes us for servers and our SQL server operating systems that we have. So, as we replace those, we'll get a better pricing on those, rather than going through a other company.
I'm moving forward on that. I'll move for approval of the Microsoft Select Agreement.
Second that.
Have a motion on second. Do we have any discussion? Denise, call the room, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Riggin.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Plouffe, while you're up there, to our streamlining abilities to the website with the videos, can that be done, or can we just provide a link to?
Well, part of that is the size of the videos that we put out there. Our website right now is hosted by Eco Strategies. I'd have to work with them to see if they would consider allowing us to put those on there, or if they're stored someplace else, then we could create a link directly. So, if they're put like on YouTube or someplace like that, then we could create a link off the county's website, through your webpage, to go to that. Size-wise on our servers, no, we don't have capability and the bandwidth to manage all that going through them.
Okay, next, we have appointments. Dale Astrop for fare board. Please, Jim.
I'll move.
I'll tell you, I don't know, I didn't know this was going to be on there, but Jane, was he a community volunteer, I assume?
Yes.
I tell you, I got an opinion that the fare board needs to be made smaller. I don't know what point we want to do that.
I kind of have some questions, but there's two other ones that haven't been filled.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm kind of hesitant to move forward on appointing anybody at this point until we have a general discussion with the board as to where we want to move with this fare board.
Good morning. I'm not sure that I don't disagree with you, but Dale is a very valuable fare board member to us. Dale works for Indiana-Michigan. Dale has saved the fare board a lot of money, and has done a lot of things on his own that has saved us a lot of money. So, you know, if we want to talk about the value of a fare board member, this is one that we consider very valuable.
I understand this, Jane, we're not talking about the value of fare board members. The community board members are, indeed, as important as any fare board member. Talking about the governing function of the fare board. Every volunteer out there, whether they can wear a fare board shirt or go out there and help, whether it be on a two-week basis or a 12-month basis. There's been some, some things that's been brought up with the 21-member fare board, I think sometimes it's standing in the way of some other things that are happening or not happening out there. And I, you know, I hate to, like I say, I know the community volunteers, they're equally as important as anybody. I mean, they all provide a good service to the fare board, the fare board couldn't exist without any of them. But when I say about the fare board, I'm talking about the governing actions of that board, and we need to reevaluate the size of that board, and how that board's to function, and maintain that those community volunteers are the ones that are also the horse that pulls that wagon.
And I'm sure that Dale would continue to serve as community volunteer. I mean, Dale is just dedicated to us, so I don't think it means that much to Dale, whether he's a voting member or a community volunteer.
And I would hope that we could come up with some sort of action here soon, but I would prefer not to point somebody at this point.
We'd be more than happy to work with you.
Did I tell you, my idea is cutting that board more than half of the governing boards.
Well, I know there's some people that, you know, they go to meetings, and they're just a lot to do.
Well...
But it could be downsizing.
There's people on that board that want to just come in and do X amount of what they do, and then, but they don't feel like they have the time, or they want to have the obligation to come to every meeting every month. So, you have that in play. You have several like that. So, you don't want to take away from what they're willing to do, and say, if you're not a board member, well, they might get their feelings hurt and not want to do that two- or three-week commitment that they currently have.
Well, I think we need to step back and kind of look at these volunteers, they're running the fairgrounds, and so we need to help them. So, I appreciate what you're saying, because it needs to be done. But I would like to move ahead with this gentleman, since he's, it was put on the second agenda, I believe, not the first one that maybe Larry didn't read, but the second one.
I missed his point.
Yeah, so that's why you might be surprised.
And I'm not taking anything from Dale, or any of them, but, you know, if we're going to make cuts, or cut that board or redo that ordinance, if we're going to do that in a month or two, I'm not going to say guarantee who's going to be on that board, who's not going to be on that board.
Well, that's true.
Just please work with us when you're doing the...
Just please work with us when you're doing the ordinance.
Well, and that, we will. I mean, we have in the past.
Of course.
Sherry's the ex officio, and we're going to rely on Sherry to get with the executive board. But there's some serious issues that need to be addressed and that we need to make sure that we have the governing function working that doesn't take away from those community volunteers and what they're doing out there to make those fair happen. We're getting stress from tax, from, you know, council and people that we have to answer to, you know, as far as funding mechanisms and whatnot. And, you know, a 21-member board is, you know, when it was created, there wasn't no emphasis on a community volunteer. It was strictly a board. So when Brooke and Bennetton and I had done that back in '07, I believe, or '08, it was to add importance to that board.
You know, the reason the community board was established is to, you know, a lot of people indicate, well, I would like to be on the Fair Board. Well, let's see how much time that you feel that you can dedicate to the Fair Board by being a community volunteer. We have community volunteers. Some of them come and some of them stay, and some of them say, this is not really what I want to do. So it just saves, it's just kind of a feeder system into the Fair Board.
It is, without a doubt. Also, take in mind, we've had some resignations. And we need to address those type of issues before we simply, in my opinion, make another appointment until we address some of those key issues and see where, you know, because we have a great relationship with the commissioners and the Fair Board and the community volunteers.
And I do want to thank Jeff Brandon for his service on the Fair Board. We shall miss him.
I don't know how soon we're willing to do any of that ordinance.
Like I said, Dell will continue to serve. It's not the fact that...
If he's not appointed today, he will continue to serve and help.
Absolutely. So it's at your pleasure.
Well, let's do this. Let's, if you don't mind, we could take a couple of weeks to figure out what, a communication between Sherry being ex officio and the executive board to see about the proper makeup of other board.
Because I'm not real sure how the executive board's appointed, so I'd really like to look at some vitals.
And then you could advise us, the commissioners, from your findings, and then we can make an appropriate action. Go from there. Go from there.
Might take longer than that, but...
Well, yeah.
With this fair coming up, I don't know. But I'll withdraw my appointment. My second.
No table business. We have no ordinances or resolutions. Department heads.
Nancy Larson, Newman Resources Director. I have two subjects. One is we have an employee health fair coming up April the 16th. My Ball State intern has done a fabulous job putting this together for the employees at no cost. So I was pretty excited about this, and I'll put the flyers out. We'll make sure all the department heads have a copy of that. The second is Sherry and I met with Work One last week, and we found some very valuable tools that we can use and utilize. Work One is one of the community partners in Delaware County. We had two different departments that apply or that sent out job posting. One was 911, and the other was the jail for community officers. We got over 300 applicants for 911, and as Contessa's going to say, the kind of like the results we got are 100 to share.
My name's Contessa Stiles with Delaware County 911. We recently placed an ad in the paper for applications. Through that process, we received over 300 applications that we were trying to cipher through, which made it very difficult. We got through some of those. They're not as quality applications as what we were expecting. So of the 300 and some, I think we pulled about 50 that we felt would be criteria and what expectations we were looking for. So this process that Nancy was just explaining to me sounds like a valuable asset that would be helping us through the process and take a little stress and time away from what we have to put into it.
Jeremy Dye also met with us, and he kind of shared with them about, they have 15 applicants. And out of the 15, he, maybe five people might qualify. So he thought it was a really good idea to utilize Work One. They also have something called Work Keys. It's a program that they can kind of profile a position and kind of rate it. And then when the applications come in, they have to know, you know, if they're going to make that cut. They're willing to have all the applications sent to them. They'll sort through them. We will receive all the applications back. They'll just earmark the top 20 or top 30, they believe, are qualified for what we're looking for. So I think it also shows an equal opportunity. It shows community partnership, and I think it's just a good move for us to go in with hope I get your support.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? A bunch of reports. We're going down to payment of claims in the amount of $1,562,760.11.
Move the payment of claims, seven.
Second to that.
Okay, have a motion and a second.
I got a question. On the claims, do we have a claim for PSC associates in that total of one they use?
Hopefully so, hopefully so.
You don't have one?
Not that I'm aware of. It'd be an false batch claim.
Well, I had a detailed talk with James King yesterday, and the contract we've been paying PSC on for a year and a half was never approved. And we paid them over $400,000. And so we need to double-check that there is not a claim, because we can't afford to pay money on the contract we don't have approved.
Thank you.
We'll wait on the payment of claims. Anybody have any questions, comments, or anything?
I got one other thing to say. On that contract, October the 1st, 2012, it couldn't have been approved anyway because there was massive changes made to the contract. And I'd given handouts to Mr. King yesterday, and I'm not going to give a presentation on that.
I can tell you, I showed it to our attorney this morning, so. And no, there's, it's not on our claim docket.
It's not on your claim docket?
No, just checking.
Okay. When will we hear back from the attorney on...
When they're done. When they're done reviewing it. When they're done talking, when they're done reviewing that information.
I know the one was talked about on February the 3rd. A booklet was given on February the 17th, and then other presentations on other contracts were given after that. And I know I gave that to, talked to my attorney, gave him that information. I had an answer that day. And then, you know, I think our taxpayers need to know what's happening.
Well, Sean, would you like to comment?
Steve Murphy's been looking into that, and he's talked to, is it Duffy?
Duffy.
Duffy. Has another call-in to an individual at the Attorney General's Office. I think he's waiting to hear back from her. He's the one been looking into that. I was on spring break the week before last when he was trying to get in touch with Mike and the other lady at the Attorney General's Office. So my understanding is he's waiting to hear back from her.
And Mr. King has given you the information on the current contract that February, the October the 1st, 2012, that was never approved and we're paying that.
That particular part that James shared with us this morning prior to meetings is being turned over to the prosecutor's office. We are not that, we're, the county commissioners don't investigate any kind of wrongdoing or whatnot as far as that goes. We correct question of validity of a claim, and that's what the process we're doing with the last bid that was approved with the photography. You know, that will most likely be, we're looking in, trying to get answers to that, what we're going to be doing at next meeting, what action we'll take then, that particular part, or anything else, any kind of things that you're implying will be discussed between yourself and the prosecutor of Delaware County.
I won't imply anything without giving you proof.
You have implied the past few meetings. So if you would please, sir, if you don't have anything else to say, I don't think we need to discuss any more of this. We're going to turn it over to the prosecutor's office this morning.
Thank you.
He has something.
Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Davis, 8408 East DeSoto Street in Muncie. Live in the community of DeSoto. I've got a petition here that I've got quite a few signatures on. I'd like to try to get our streets paved. Since the sewers are in, Delaware County has no reason not to pave them.
Yeah, we talked to Chris, and Chris has got that on. But yeah, please bring those up. But yeah, Chris is looking to do some work afterwards. He tends to work that.
We were on the list last year, but we ran out of money and time when the weather got bad.
Well, I heard that they were just going to do the main drive.
Well, I suggested that we...
The main drive is the best street in DeSoto.
Well...
I know we've discussed with going into some of the neighborhoods and stuff and also paving some of those.
Especially that first street.
You know, on my street, there's people have got reflectors up in their yard, so the cars will not go off of the street to miss potholes.
Yeah, I haven't been out there this spring, but...
I've lived out there 55 years, and to my knowledge, my street has never been paved with a paving machine, just chipping and sealing.
How's your drainage?
Sir, you need to go back to the speaker, honey. That's okay, be careful.
But I would like, if at all possible, before I die, I'd like to see those streets paved. So I appreciate your trouble, and I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to take the vote. I believe we've already had the marchman in a second. Denise, we call the rule on the payment of claims.
Sure. Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And if we don't have any more questions or comments, entertain a motion to recess.
Second to that.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, call the rule.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Riggin?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you.